Call the meeting to order. Two point oh, adjustments to the agenda. Is there need for any adjustments? Three point oh, audience and communication. Do it? No? You guys have anything? No? All right. Four point oh, presentations. Four point one, technology integration. Welcome, Ed Bianchi.
Thanks.
It's been a long time since we've seen you here.
Did you like the show?
Yeah, I'll be honest.
Thank you. All right. So, we did a short presentation for you. My goal is ten minutes, and then if you have any questions, I'll try, I'll do my best to answer them. So, CCS technology integration, it has been a whirlwind of change over the past year and a half, and it looks like for the next year as well. And we've really tried hard to shield ourselves from some of the change by careful planning. And I'm feeling pretty successful about that right now. We have a good team, and we're really thoughtful about what's happening next. And as we go through this, you'll see that there's a lot on the horizon. So I guess, goal wise, I want to give you a sense for where we are. I want to give you a sense for what kinds of things we have in place to get broad-based decision-making happening for ourselves, and where we're going next, which is truly the challenge.
Ed, you want me to advance the slides for you?
That'd be great. Okay, systematic planning. So, we obviously have the school board budget process, or the school budget process. That's a huge one. To inform that, we have a local technology steering committee, and we carefully evaluate what technologies are available. Try to come up with the most economical package possible to accomplish the tasks of the year. CSSU-wide technology integration. Educators working as a team, meeting regularly with superintendent curriculum director. This is happening, used to be monthly, and it's more than that now because there's so many initiatives that are up and right on the front burner. CCS local technology team meeting, monthly, to coordinate support integration. That's a broad-based team of representatives from around the school. There isn't currently a community member on it, but I'd love to have one. We're also thinking about student representations being a part of that committee, which would also be fabulous. CCS technology steering committee meeting, weekly, to budget, plan, and coordinate technology support. And that's the administration with the tech department, including Mike Hanfer from CSSU, who's the network administrator, and myself. And then CCS supervision model, supporting technology integration for all students. Meaning that by administrators working with Greg, supervising me, as well as supervising teachers and support staff around the school, and setting goals involving technology integration, and laying out expectations, it really does a lot to support the change that's taking place in school. Thank you, Greg. Okay, the local technology committee, or team we call it, meets monthly. So you have elementary, middle-level classroom teachers, special educators. I don't have to read the whole thing to you, but basically a broad-based team. I'd love to see community support on there, and I'd love to see student representation. So those are two areas for us to work on. Two main posts I this year, so after reviewing the tech audit, which I'm sure you're aware that we did, we were looking at S-Back preparedness because smarter balanced achievement consortium testing is a major change from kneecap and from the way we've done things in the past. And I think we're well-positioned to meet that challenge, but it is going to involve a learning curve for everyone in the school. And then, of course, technology integration is ongoing. And so that's always an area of focus, to improve what we do with kids and how we integrate technology with the current curriculum. So, current areas of focus this year, and these are things that are making a big change in the school right now. Chromebooks are basically computers or devices that access the internet. They have a keyboard and screen. You can see a picture of two, a picture of two students using Chromebooks there on the screen. So they look very much like a laptop, but they have no hard drive. They sell for around three hundred dollars. And when you turn, open one up, it's on in eight seconds. And the student logs in, they use it, they're off in eight seconds. It's a fabulous machine for our purposes in that it's economical, and it has tremendous capability because of Google Apps and the Chrome browser, as well as Google Classroom. And I'll say more about Google Classroom in a minute or two, but Google Classroom is a learning management system. They call them LMSs. Everybody loves jargon here, but... So that teachers can assign work to students, and students can accomplish those tasks, and then turn the work in all virtually to the teacher. Teacher can then grade the work, make comments, and return it back to the student. And then you never see a piece of paper. So, from that standpoint, it is saving money as well as helping with our environment. And certainly, that's a high priority for Shalat Central School. All right. So, current areas of focus continue. So obviously, Common Core and S-Back preparedness, getting teachers ready for this new standardized test that will be taken on the computer. And that means that students have to be able to represent effectively what they know on the computer. Their writing, students from third grade through eighth grade have to be able to write complete documents in a reasonable time period. They have to answer other questions. There are tasks like highlighting sentences that provide certain pieces of information within a document. There's mathematics, there's graphing. So you have to be able to use technology to graph mathematics, to create equations. So all these things are new to us, and it's not that students weren't doing them before, but we have to be able to, we have to make sure that students are comfortable doing this on the computer. And I just, little anecdote there, in that we've done kneecap writing with eighth grade for the past three years. And we also did an S-Back test two years ago. And in both cases, something, I saw something on the standardized test in writing that I've never seen with a pencil and paper task. And that was students going back and revising, and adding sentences, and deleting sentences, and going in and reviewing what they wrote. Students say, "I'm finished," and I would say, "Well, maybe you should take a look at it." You know, sometimes you type the same word twice, or you might have misspelled something inadvertently because there's no spell check on the test, obviously. And students go back, and I'm looking at them, and they're typing, adding sentences into their work. That could never happen with a paper and pencil writing section. So it is impressive. Progress reporting, K four, this isn't a big change for Shalat in that if you look at the new K four report card, it's very similar to what we've been using for a long time now. But it is standards-based, which ours have been for a while. And I think they may have used us as inspiration. I don't want to claim that, but it seems that way to me. Any rate, I don't think that's as big a change for us, but it does mean teachers will be entering their grades into the V-CAP system, which means that those records will be there. And we can always go back and look at how a student did on any grade level, and it will be just a part of their evaluation profile. Personal learning plans are new. The state legislature has given us this gift, and it's really, I mean, if you think about it, it's wonderful. But it means that we have to manage for seventh graders next November, personal learning plans. And so we're looking at a system called Naviance, which we'll be able to get through VSAC fairly inexpensively, that will allow students and parents and teachers to work together as a team to create a personal learning plan, and then manage that plan. And within that system, kids can do checklists. They can, they will have tasks to accomplish. There's a interest career survey that they take of one hundred and forty-eight questions that will make suggestions of things that they might be interested in for their futures and for projects. It's really a wonderful system. So I'm excited about that opportunity. But it is, again, it's another piece on top of everything else that we're doing. And then professional learning about technology integration, continuum. The shift here is that now teachers have available to them so many great web resources. Before, it was Ed, you know, and maybe Ed, and maybe they took a course. But now, I mean, the world is at their fingertips, and there's so much available. And part of my job now is helping teachers identify great tech resources that will keep them up to date as they work with their students. All right. So, technology resources, obviously, we have myself, the technology integrationist. We have the school librarian, Heidi Eustace. We both work very closely as a team, along with Claire Ove, the assistant in the library. So we make a formidable team, I think, and we basically have slightly different approaches. Heidi's more about school information, about intellectual property, about appropriate use, where my job is more about the technology tools. But we support each other, and we're always bringing new things to each other to try and learn about. And it's a match made in heaven from my point of view. I feel very lucky to work with our school librarian. Accessibility of hardware and devices. Chromebooks have been a quantum leap over laptops, which are fine. They work very well. They can do more. Laptop is more versatile. But it's also slower, it's more involved, it's harder to use. And then iPads have made a monumental shift. The iPads are always signed out of the library. We have forty currently, and you can't, you know, you can't keep them in. And there are always new apps coming along. Part of my job is to manage those apps, to make sure they're available for teachers. I have a Spanish teacher ask me for two apps for tomorrow. She's working with her kids. One is called Culturegram. That is a site for helping kids understand the difference in cultures. And the other one is called Duolingo, which is actually foreign language software, which the third graders absolutely love. And you can teach yourself a language with this system. It's similar to Rosetta Stone, if you're familiar with that, but it's free, and it's web accessible. And then our systems for addressing tech troubleshooting repairs, we have a help desk. And Nancy Myrick is a fabulous technician. We're so lucky to have her. Okay. So, recent improvements, faster access. We have universal wireless around the school. We have improved device-to-student ratios. Greater staff access. We've provided staff members with devices that are the same ones their students are using. We also have staff members taking in service. Professional development, where they are actually able to get a device as part of their PD. Money that they have access to. Better school and home communication, Jupiter Grades. I think back to this school board, you know, maybe four or five years ago. And I remember that having parents be able to access report cards and conferencing information was a very high priority for you guys, and you really led the way. And I'm happy to say that that has now become commonplace, that parents and students... If I ask students in seventh, eighth grade, "What's really good software that you use?" They're going to mention Jupiter Grades, which I wouldn't expect, but it just means that much. They can go in and see if an assignment is done. Parents can check the same thing. It relieves a lot of anxiety, and it keeps kids on the beat, which is important. Applications aligned to the CCS curriculum, constantly getting better and better in embedding technology into the math, into the writing program, science, and social studies. There are just so many great applications. And then more efficient student-teacher workload, and that goes back to Google Classroom. So the fact that a teacher can create an assignment for their class, push it out, the students go in, they access the assignment, they do the work, they hit turn in at the top of the screen. The teacher gets the document, and is there, ready to work on it. And I'll tell you, just a little anecdote very quickly. Mary Morosky, one of our fifth-grade teachers in Language Arts, was talking about how the writing she's seeing from her students is better than it ever has been. And she attributes that to the Chromebooks because there's more time for them to write. And she said that she was correcting writing last night, and evaluating writing last night. And she found one of the assignments, the student was actually working on it from home at the time she was checking it. And so the two of them had a little conference right there online at seven thirty at night. And then another teacher of the staff, and he raised his hand, Kathy Lauren, said, "You know, that student shared the same writing with me." And so here's last year's teacher, also having the same piece of work that's now being done in fifth grade, being shared with her as well. And so it really made you feel like, okay, this is now a learning community beyond the traditional grades that we've thought about. All right. Staff training and professional development. So we have summer courses. CSSU offers them. We have Vital Learn, which is the tech integration organization offering them. The universities and colleges in the area do workshops. There are plenty of conferences, webinars. There's more training now. Believe it or not, on my way home today from school, from, I left staff meeting at four. I had, from four to five, I did a history mapping webinar in my car, through my phone. I didn't look at it, but I listened to it, and it was fabulous. There's just, there's not enough minutes in the day to take advantage of all the training that's available. Pre-service, we did training this year. In-service, we're doing, we're spending four in-service periods doing training on S-Back and on Chromebooks and on a variety of things. We use staff meeting time. I've got a power training in the morning on S-Back. So all those things are happening. Team planning and training, daily work with tech integration educator, locally created resources on the website. If I have, if I'm going to teach teachers about iPads, or Chromebooks, or Google Classroom, I create a companion website to go with that and link it to our website. So the teacher, if they, if they don't quite remember something I said, has a place just to go right back to to see it. Professional learning networks are available through the web as well. All right. All right. And then very quickly, all of these programs, I won't go into them in detail because there isn't time, but all of these programs allow teachers to monitor student performance. From something simple like typing, where it'll give teachers feedback in how successful the students are and at what level they've achieved in typing, to their fact fluency in fast math, to Lexia, which is phonics integration. Naviance is our PLP, our personal learning plan for seventh grade. All these programs, Google Classroom I already told you about, KidBlog. And parents can see a lot of this as well, but much of it is available. So that as students work through this, by the way, the last one is an important one. Our first textbook in Shalat's history that is web-based. And I just wanted you to think about that in economic terms for a second. So you have a choice of paying six thousand dollars for a bound text with, on paper, or you can pay a thousand dollars a year for a web subscription that every year you can reevaluate and decide, is that where we want to go next year? So the flexibility, the economics of it, in the end, it'll cost the same, but in terms of having a web-based textbook, you're always up to date. You know, whatever changes, changes, that book, that website is automatically updated. So it's going very well in fifth grade this year, and Mary Morosky has led the charge on that one, too. Okay. Last but not least, these are typical learning integration applications. So it's, the kids are using many, many programs in all kinds of subject areas. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. There's, I couldn't list all, but these are some of the primary ones. And again, it's fabulous to see the work that's going on. It's unprecedented in our school to see how much technology integration there is. And next steps, we're going to continue to improve student-to-device ratio, we hope to, I should say. Expand available programs, apps, and subscriptions. Continue to enhance parent-teacher-student communication, a high priority. Continue to provide teacher professional development. And also to develop systems for supporting individual learning plans for seventh graders. We have the National Science Standards in that one above there, as well as the Common Core State Standards. So these are all challenges that we face. And I think with the kind of staff that you have in Shalat, you're going to be very proud as we move along of all those teachers. And I'm very, very proud of our students. They're amazing. Okay. So I don't know if I did ten minutes, but I did the best I could. So any questions?
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Thank you very much, Ed. That was very much.
It was my pleasure.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, moving on. Five point oh, reports to the board. Five point one, principals' report.
Any questions about the short principals' report this one?
Well, congratulations to Colleen Brady, I guess, who was named, a recipient of the 2014 University of Vermont Outstanding Teacher Award. That's, that's great. Well deserved.
Yeah, I was able to attend with Colleen. It was a great, great event.
Any questions on the very lengthy report? Five point two, CSSU debrief. Common topic, we continue with Molly's presentation about outcomes and indicators. Anything else of note?
Just the special education budgeting.
Yes. So... The special education budgeting, so I don't know if the people who are not on the CSSU board took a look at that presentation. But obviously, with the transference of the entire budget into the CSSU budget, there's line items on the CSSU budget that have increased by more than a thousand percent. We don't have yet an actual way to compare what we spent last year or what we budgeted last year for special ed and what we will be budgeting this year, but we will have that for our next.
Well, you, it can't be just segregated now because it's all mingled into one.
Right.
You know, you're, you'll be able to compare your total assessment versus your total expenditures in last year's.
Right. So we asked for, since it will be determined by ADM, we'd like to see what our ADM share is and compare it to what we budgeted last year. We're assuming that our special ed assessment is going to be higher than what we had to budget last year, but we don't have the specifics of that yet. Was there anything else on the special ed?
I mean, it's just that, sort of globally across the SU, they're expecting five percent increase. And then how that gets passed down to the local boards will be a function of this ADM thing, which is going to introduce some more sort of volatility versus the number that we're used to seeing.
And I guess the other, the other thing that was mentioned is that we have, every school has typically had sort of a reserve because in special ed, we've had such fluctuations that you don't want to be caught where you have a student come in in February with, you know, really significant needs, and you don't have the money. So since each school had sort of a reserve, always built in a reserve to cover those unexpected costs, you know, is it possible that we could reduce that reserve amount given that we're spreading the costs over all of the schools? So I think that was sort of left as a question for administration to look at before the next meeting. All right. Five point three, VSBA debrief.
What you were just talking about.
Yeah.
The logic of distributing that reserve across the CSSU. If it's random, and there's no more likelihood that nobody would show up at CCS with needs, then people would show up at all five or four feeder schools with enhanced needs. So, you're really not changing the crapshoot nature of the difficulty, unless I misunderstand.
I, I think maybe if you think about it, and at least this is how I understood it, and I might have misinterpreted, but if there is going to be one kid that's going to land somewhere in CSSU, it might be your school, it might be somebody else's school, everybody's going to sort of budget for like the outlier chance to get that one person. But if you know that there's only one person in the whole CSSU, instead of your school having contingency for one kid, the district can have a contingency for one kid instead of five, or four, or whatever.
But yes, as you said, it could be. Each school gets an outlier. So I think that's why, when the question was posed, do we need to all, do we need to build in that same cushion? Or is there a way to reduce it by some amount? It was something that I think it just hadn't, they hadn't looked at the numbers yet to think about that and...
I think part of it is, is because this is all based on what we're trying to plan in June, September for a year later, which is a challenge in itself. Student needs could change in the other direction, too, in that we don't need pairs or we're not doing an out-of-state or an out-of-school placement that will help balance the things. And when you're doing that across five buildings versus one, there's just more, more room for budget fluctuations than there is, especially for you in Heinsburg with the smaller budget.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I think it really manages the risk differently or better, actually. But on the extended subject, I couldn't hear everything that was said at the table. Where was, where was the discussion about where the pairs are going to be hired left?
The, I believe where they left that conversation was that they will vote in February one way or the other unless Gene hears that board members still want to have a discussion about it, have continued discussion about it. Especially if they think questions between now and February.
Any of the statutes such that the CSSU decision about where the pairs will be hired?
It's the SU board, yes.
All right. Five point three, VSBA debrief. I guess that might be you, Clyde.
I'm sorry?
That might be you. You attended VSBA, right?
I would bring this...
I heard it was great.
Down into two, well, it depends who you're talking to.
It was awful.
One is what went on at the business meeting, and the other is what went on with the keynote speaker. The keynote speaker was a fellow named Daggett, whom we brought to CSSU eighteen years ago, and he spoke. So... His central theme is the changing nature of education, what kids need to know. And some discussion about how different schools are doing at providing that. But it, it revealed shortcomings of how that's evaluated and who evaluates it. His thing is online, and the reason I go to that is because there's a lot in there. He did make one interesting observation about some research that the Gates Foundation funded, that he conducted, about the fastest improving school districts in the nation. And what it boils down to is, they're placing a lot more emphasis on words like perseverance, loyalty, trust, these non-quantifiable things. And the twelve words that they identified that are most common to those themes are actually the twelve words that are most common in the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Boy Scout Code, and the Bible. Take that as you will. So that was interesting, but there's a lot of data that goes around that. And there's really interesting data about seventy percent of the kids who graduate from, seventy percent of the kids in this country who are age-eligible are not acceptable to the armed forces for a variety of reasons, either basic intelligence, education, or criminal record. And the point of that information was the increasing selectivity of all the sectors of the economy in terms of who they'll employ and who will succeed there. And that was, it was an indicator, but it wasn't the whole story. It was just an indicator. But it was very telling because he went on to correlate that with the fact that the rate at which jobs are disappearing corresponds directly to whether a particular job can be reduced to an algorithm. In other words, if it can be computerized, what it boils down to. And then to make, finish the point about the armed forces, the reason why many of them are so unacceptable is because they can't read, they can't read manuals. They can't logically deduct. And it's really the same absence of skills that exists in a lot of high school graduates. He also talked about the discrepancy between the level of remediation required in college and the apparently increasing high school graduation rate, and questioned the validity of that. That was the presentation side of it. On the business meeting side, were you?
No, because I can't go. So God, I'm excited that you're happening here.
It was very telling because there are two hundred and eighty school boards in Vermont, two hundred and eighty-two, something like that. Forty are represented at this business meeting. And it's the business meeting at which they discuss the various resolutions and things that the school board association is going to go to Capitol Hill and lobby on behalf of, and represent themselves as representative of all those school boards. And the two main things that happened at the business meeting were the regional representatives. The bylaws were changed so that those people are no longer directly elected by the membership, us, but are now chosen by the executive board of the School Board Association. And then they went on, they being the School Board Association and the forty districts represented, to basically allow themselves to lobby for consolidation. I won't bore you with all the details, and I don't, I don't have... I won't bore you with all the details and I don't, I don't have the actual text with me. But that's alarming because that will allow the School Board Association to lobby for further separation between local boards, local authority, local control, and state control of education. So if that's an issue of concern for you, you should be concerned about that. And it's really interesting. Obviously, I've been to a lot of these things, and it's always the same format. They have all these resolutions, ten oh, plus residual resolutions. If they fully discuss three of those things, it's impressive. And usually the way that business meeting ends is, well, we're out of time. It's time for dinner. We'll talk about it next year. So it's kind of humorous on one side, but on the other, the legislature pays attention in this order to people on the subject of education legislation. The union first, the School Board Association distant second, individual boards, and even more distant third. So there's a prioritization going on that it really constitutes a self-fulfilling prophecy of what's going to happen at, in the legislature. You heard Elaine's comments next door about Ann Bobbs, about governance issues in the legislature this year. So if you're concerned about having something to say as a community member, you should be extremely concerned.
5.4 First Quarter Financial Management Report. So my question, so it's great, we have a net $180,000 net favorable position. That's good. Is there any benefit in, so typically we ask for that to be applied towards, to be able to use that in the next budget to offset. Is there any benefit in asking to use this towards, to reduce the amount that we would need to bond? Or is it better to seek a bond for the whole?
I know there are rules about how boards can do that. I don't remember if you actually have to warn an article at town meeting day asking the voters if they will allow you to take the bond balance and apply it to the bond or not. I know you have some parameters around a construction fund, but I believe when it's a full bond, you have to get voter approval. And I don't remember if it's a separate article or if it's an article within a warned bond, the warning for the bond itself. But I'd want to have Bob weigh in.
So, you know, normally we would take that, if, say we ended up with 180 extra, we use that in offset, use it sort of as revenue for the next budget. We have to get, we have a separate article though that the voters have to approve, right? Applying that. But I just didn't know if it made any sense. If we do end up voting to go forward with the bond for the capital, things that need doing, can you have that as, may we use this 180 towards that project and then just get a bond for the difference? I didn't know if that's a possibility.
No.
It's not.
You'll have to get permission from the electorate from-
No, I know we need to get permission from the electorate. I just didn't know if it made sense to borrow less or if it's better for that to offset or to be considered as revenue in our budget, like which financially is better if we're seeking that? If we choose to go forward with looking for a bond?
Depends on interest rates.
Right. So that's why I want to know if, first, can we do that? And is there a benefit one way or the other financially?
I may have Bob contact you to make sure I understood the question correct.
And it will also, and what else?
Yeah, I mean, obviously a lot of things have happened between now and then, but yeah, I was just-
The other pieces too in the second bullet that Bob's predicting that when these pieces are resolved, that we're likely to be projecting a lower favorable position.
So can somebody elaborate on that? What's a para educator coding issue 20K?
We had a, at the time of the service plan last year, we believed the funding source would be one. And now in actuality where that para is split is different. So by department it's off, and so there's less revenue coming in because it's not 100% special ed. Is that, did I hit the right one? I think that, yes, that's correct.
So it was, it was put in as 100% and now it's something less than 100%?
It was like 70, 30 special ed versus regular ed. It's more like 80 or even 100% regular ed. And at this point, I can't remember. Sure behavior specialist. I think there's no special ed component this year, and we anticipated there would be last year when we budgeted, and there's not.
So you're saying that's a $20,000 difference?
So there's no offsetting revenue for that expense right now.
And that's a $20,000 difference or some fraction of $20,000?
Some fraction of that.
Okay. And then the other piece there, an open position, not yet filled?
We had a, with Emily Vattis becoming the math coordinator for the year, her position was open. And at the time, the quarter ended in September, we hadn't filled her position. And when we reviewed it, none of us remembered that. So it showed a lower expenses when we know we will in fact fill that position. In effect, I think we processed that this week. I think we found the replacement for Emily's replacement. You have to follow the logic on that one, but-
How much is that, more or less?
Mid-year higher. It's probably 12,000, 12,000, something like that. Except, depending whether they take benefits or not. But by second quarter, that will all be resolved.
Okay. And those are the only sort of things that you think are material to that number?
Yep. And then with the help, the $50,000, we just, at budget time, we assume a family plan. And so people didn't take them, which was good, I guess.
I remember that, that was a big sort of discussion point at audience feedback.
What to assume for salary.
So we came in under those assumptions that we expected to be coming in under.
And we adjusted for that during the service plan this time as well.
Cindy, can you help me out? Just because I'm still a little bit confused on the timing. My understanding was that everything's special ed-wise is being centralized next year?
Correct. In terms of the budget, yes.
Right. But it looked like some of these numbers versus, you know, sort of where we are now versus projected or versus the adopted budget, were like, you know, like-
Can you give me a page number?
IDAB, you know, the revenue went to zero.
What page are you on?
Just the first one there, the revenue page.
Yep.
So it says those were moved to CSU?
Correct. So we found, that was one of the things we learned last, after budget, was that the IDAB funds actually have to all come to CSU so that it's still being used to offset the expense of the teachers who it would have been applied to when-
Because every other year it comes in one side and then-
Right. And so it's coming in, but it's also coming off your assessment. So there are two teachers, I believe, that we identify in Charlotte as being off, having their expenses offset with IDAB monies. So that money is at the issue. It's lowered the cost. And then your actual assessment for those teachers this year will be after the revenue received for IDAB.
And so I'd see that in one of the positive variances on the next page?
I think so, yes.
Would it be under special ed, like?
It should be under, yes, consolidated Act 153.
Okay.
The, your actual assessment for that should line up to be close to what we projected because your staff is consistent. What I don't know, and Megan would know, is whether we got more or less IDAB money than we expected this year. I don't remember that off the top of my head.
All right. Thanks.
That's so good.
Clarify for the board. I know I think it came up in September. There was a question regarding our fourth quarter financial management review, and that we ended up doing better at the end of the year than what was predicted for third quarter. Greg and I went back and looked at our fourth quarter, and from that, we noticed that our encumbrance process was poorly done last year, and because of that, we didn't do a better, a good job of predicting where we'd come out. So we've looked at that and made some enhancements to it so we can better predict where we will be at the end of the year. And there's an O and M piece which is kind of related to that if you want to share.
Yeah, very much related. So basically, at the third quarter, what we need to drill down deeper into is look at all the money that's been encumbered for various things. Fuel, oil, tech services, different things, because they're encumbered, POs are opened, and that money is encumbered, and that's what the FMR is based on. But measure that against, okay, now here we are in February. What do we really think it's going to cost us to get through the end of the year? So for some reason, that didn't happen to the level it has in the past last year. So when we got to the, we had, we had more funds necessary to pay out the rest of those services. So the encumbrances were higher than needed. So we should be able to catch that at the third quarter FMR and at the second quarter FMR. So one of the things we put back into place, which we didn't do last year in terms of O and M, because O and M is an area where lots of things get encumbered early because they're like fuel, oil, and big, big-ticket things, is that the bookkeeper and Dave and I meet monthly a week before our local FMR. And we're going to go through the detail on tech services and all those pieces and see where we lie with those encumbrances. So.
Any other questions on the first quarter financial management report? All right. 5.5 Facilities Committee.
Yeah, I'm, Greg, I don't know if you want to talk about this here or if we actually have a capital projects line item under discussion matters. So I'll keep it brief. Last meeting, we were just discussing a possible bond to deal with the roofs and the elevator. And the open question, big open question was about the elevator and what kind of maintenance or replacement it would need. And what we've come to find out through engineers and our architects and everybody else is we do not need to build the new shaft, which was sort of the big thing. There are other issues involved, but instead of a $300,000 price tag, we're looking around $150,000 for that project. And I think Greg might talk about that a little bit more when we get to the capital projects line item. But that would be my big update. You'll see it more on the sheet, and I think Greg will talk about that in a minute.
Not a lot more to add. Other than that, we, we had a vendor come and actually look to spec out the elevator and give us a tighter assessment. So that, I'll have numbers, and the architects are helping us with that.
All right. 6.0 Discussion Matters. 6.1 Policy. We have two policies, professional development and subpoenas. 6.1.1 is professional development. This is the board's opportunity to help the policy wrap, who is me. Know if you have any questions or concerns or things that you think should be changed in this policy. When is the policy board meeting? It's not tomorrow, is it?
No, we don't meet until January because of budget.
So if, if things come up and you, after the meeting, you can let me know because we'll have until January. But does anyone have anything on professional development? All right. 6.1.2 D14, which is subpoenas. Anyone?
I have two attorneys here. I expect to hear something from one of them.
You should argue-
Considering the policy is if you get a subpoena, talk to the attorney.
If you get a subpoena, you tell the administrators who gets the attorney. Yep. All right. 6.2 Communications Board Corner. We discussed this a little bit before the meeting informally. Let me know if anyone wants to jump on and get an article by the 24th. If not, I'll try to look at what our budget meeting on the 16th, what we're covering for that, and cobble something together is to let the community know that that's what will be discussed at that meeting. All right. 6.3 Administrative Structure. And is this you?
If you want to move to either 6.4 or 6.5, I can see if Elaine was going to come.
Did we discuss administrative structure last month with Elaine?
We did.
Here?
It was the month before. It wasn't last month.
No, it was last month.
It was the month before.
Okay. Yeah, if we could find-
We just alluded to the fact that-
That we are awaiting a report or recommendation. So yeah, if you could allow Elaine. So let's, let's skip over administrative structure, move on to 6.4 Hiring Process. This is a continuation of discussion that we had last month and possibly the month before. And we have the teacher selection and evaluation of candidates that is currently used in hiring teachers. So I leave it to the board if people have additional things they want to discuss about this or a request for this to be something besides a discussion matter.
Has anybody changed their opinion on this as to whether or not the board should have representation in this committee?
I have not. I have not either.
I have not. And, you know, when I think about it all the more, I think that a part of holding administrators accountable for implementing what we decide is important as a board, that I almost feel like there'd be a break in that chain if we're involved in the hiring process. How then can we hold administrators accountable for, you know, if we feel like the people that they're hiring and supervising are not performing to our expectations? So that sort of makes me all the more resolute in my position that I think the board should not be directly involved in the hiring of teachers or other staff.
Would there be a way to have some information, some more information about the candidates than a resume that, you know, are, will sign off on the hire? Is there a way to sort of talk about the fit, you know, with CCS for those hires? Or any sort of information, you know, kind of why that candidate was chosen out of?
Certainly.
Just to kind of bring it more to life than the piece of paper that. And is it in the Vermont statute that we need to sign off as a board on hires?
What the statute says is that the superintendent is responsible for bringing you a candidate, and that then you vote on it so that the chair and I can sign the contract.
You know, we went through this last time. What the statute says is that you're responsible to bring a candidate, to recommend a candidate.
Right.
That's it. That doesn't really imply non-involvement of the board. And your comment, Kristen, about holding the administration accountable, that comes into effect and holds true during, it's not called probation anymore. It's called, I forget what it's called, about the next two years where they are supposed to be supervised and evaluated to see if they're up to snuff. Anybody who's ever reviewed resumes and applications and recommendations and then compared that with actual performance, notice that there's no necessary correlation there. You do the best you can in the early stage, and then that's really where the thing ends and the real work begins. The evaluation that you're talking about is really what's critical because it may or may not turn out to be an actual fit and be good at, at what they're supposed to do. So it's really kind of a non sequitur to say that you can't hold the administration accountable if there was a board member involved in the hiring committee.
Yeah, it was still, you know, started with Susan's point, which was if we don't- Yeah, it was still, you know, started with Susan's point, which was if we don't have any context to put the candidate in, we don't have any ability to have any useful judgment other than to vote no for no reason or to vote yes because we just assume that this is the best candidate and we have absolutely no context to put that in, so.
Well, I guess the context you'd have to put it in is though that you've hired administrators that you believe are doing a good job of using the process, using the criteria and maybe looking back at the experience of the people that they've hired in the past.
Right.
And not just the administrators, but the committee that's been put together also.
But that would, that would suggest that there really shouldn't be any signing off on the board's part on a candidate.
Right. And that's, I guess, a legal part. I mean, I can't change that. And I don't know that anybody's ever really thought it out either.
Yeah. I mean, to the extent that that's part of the process, it would suggest that there's some reason for it and you sort of feel a little bit remiss if you didn't exercise any kind of, you know, judgment or any kind of attempt at informing yourself other than just seeing the piece of paper and voting yes because you have no real information.
Well, even with the background that Susan was suggesting, with the opportunity to say, so why was this the best candidate? What were the?
To me, it kind of feels like the status quo, right? You know, it's like you assume, if I assume that, you know, I'd be better informed having some involvement in the process, you know, that sounds kind of close to just trust me. You know what I mean? Because it goes, you're, you're the best one because they were the best qualified.
Well, the legal require, the, the legal part is that their contract is with us. So that's why we have to vote on it because we're entering into, as a board, we're representing Charlotte and entering into a contract with them. So that's the reason.
Right. And that might have to do with your authorizing the expenditure.
Right. But also we can be sued if we renege on the contract. We have to, we're offering a legally binding document. So if, if that's the case, I mean, is it just teachers? Do, would the board want to be involved in hiring the school nurse and hiring paraeducators and hiring the food service people? Is, is the teacher a separate category that people are thinking or is there, is it more the teachers? Would you want to be involved in hiring the behavior coordinator or behavior, the planning room, whatever we're calling that now?
Well, forgive me if this sounds judgmental, but by and large, those positions, with the possible exception of the nurse, are not as important as the instructional faculty. And that's very important. So to sign those contracts, you're referring to basically ignorance because you have real knowledge beyond a name that the superintendent puts on the table is kind of, you're not really executing your responsibility. And as I mentioned last time, you're really saying to these people, you don't really have any meaningful representation in this process. Because by the logic that you presented, even though you tacked something on at the end of evaluation, you don't even need the rest of the committee. If what you, if your logic is that you're hiring administrators to see that this gets done properly, it's really not going to take effect until they get around to actually seeing that these people do something.
Well, we do have a process and we do have criteria.
We do get more than a name. When we, when we've hired the couple of teachers I've been here for, we've heard about the entire process that was gone through to hire the teacher. I, my, I agree with Kristen. My reasons are a little different. I just view it as micromanaging the people that we've hired to hire the teachers. Our, it is, our administration, it is their responsibility to run the school in such a way to provide a good education. Part of that responsibility is to hire good teachers. And if they do not hire good teachers, then yes, we fire them and get new administration. That's where I come down on this. That's where I came down on it last time and I really haven't changed my mind.
And the, the lag time between identifying enough ineffectual teachers to justify removing the administration.
I, I do not think it's cured by having a school.
Do not interrupt.
I do.
Do not interrupt. I'm speaking.
I do not think it is cured by having a school board member on a committee.
All right, yeah, let's just try to have one person speak.
Kristen, you're the chair.
I just said.
When one person here has the floor, they have the floor and it's your obligation to discipline the people. Don't abide by the process.
You do not need to reprimand me. I was doing just that. I was doing just that. I do not need to be reprimanded.
The lag time between identifying enough ineffective faculty that would justify removing administrators is so great as to be unmanageable and meaningless.
Well, to that end, how do you see the role of a single board person on that committee changing the process? Would you expect then that board member to come and do a debrief in an executive session? To provide input and information about different candidates? To get guidance about which candidates or which people who applied for a position you should recommend as being worthy of getting an interview or having their, their teaching style evaluated? How would that play out in a practical way?
It's really the same question about any particular member of the committee. It's one opinion of many. And you don't eliminate the whole committee based on the fact that any one person's opinion is just one person's opinion. So you really, if there's a point in having school board members, then we should be able to select among ourselves somebody whose judgment we trust as one opinion in many to give input on the process. The same way that we select members from our body to be on any committee.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't know whether this would help or not, so I leave, this is the question for the board. Under the hiring criteria that we shared with you that has, also happens to be in your packet again this month because of the policy, Elaine has a list of who vote, you know, who should be on a hiring committee. And I can't, tough in my head, but there's a list. And would it be enough to add board member, question mark? And because what, from a human resource point of view, depending on time of year, there's a need to be able to pull the committee together and get this done quickly because it's a competitive market. And the only reason I want to say, can it be a question mark? Can it be, you know, hey, is anybody available question versus that we have to hold up the process till we find a board member who can meet on these days? Because that's a very practical issue, especially in the spring when you're competing with other people for open positions. Just, just something I'm wondering if that would address the need.
Well, I think before we get that, we would need to move for an action item. I don't know if there's the will of the board to try to change the process as is. So if, you know, we can pull the board and see if we want to put on as an action item next month, we could, we could do that. We can't make a decision tonight.
Right.
So we propose a motion to create an action item for next time?
Well, no, I mean, I guess, I guess we would just get added.
Is there an action?
I guess we'll just, I guess we just put it on.
Well, there's going to be interest in doing it.
Well, the way it works is in the chair's opinion, there's enough will on the board for it to be discussed as an action item. Then it goes on as an action item and then if somebody makes a motion, then it's either approved or not approved.
All right. I think that's.
And the other option is for the board's discussion to inform procedure without any formal action. But since we don't have a overwhelming direction, it'd be difficult to do that.
So let's make sure we add that as an action item. All right, should, I guess we'll go back to six point three, administrative structure.
And so this is for discussion, board input? Is that right?
I honestly cannot remember.
Yeah. So I know that you were in a process of evaluating this. Yeah, so I have some meetings scheduled. They, I haven't had them yet, so I'm not prepared to share any other information. And from my standpoint, you have a school of nearly 500 kids. It's a pre-K through eight school, so there's quite a range. And so that adds to the complexity of it. The size in itself would warrant two people. The size in itself. And the fact that it's pre-K through eight, even if you were much smaller, I think would warrant two people. So that's my opinion of this. And looking across the state and the numbers of kids in schools, this is a large school, medium to large school, and it is pre-K eight. So I'd like to hear, you know, what you're thinking, what other information. I'm going to meet with each of the principals and with a subgroup of the teachers to just see, you know, what else they're thinking about. But my recommendation will always be that a school of this size needs two people. The question would be, and that'll be based on conversations I have with others, whether those two people should be co-principals, whether there should be a lead principal and a, you know, some other structure. That's, I think, what's up for discussion. Obviously, this is a board, that is a board decision. This is board work to say, how, what is the staffing that we want for our school? But having a pre-K through eight school with 500 kids, I believe warrants two administrators. One singularly focused on the pre-K four, five, and the other one singularly focused on the middle school.
And I guess when I think of this, I, I agree with that, but we, I know we have heard concern in our community. I mean, some just because the belief that there should be one person ultimately responsible.
Right.
But also sort of as we have declining enrollment, you know, at what point is that not a sustainable model? So it might be helpful to have information about, you know, even with that big grade differential, at what point is it just not?
Right. So I provided for you last year when we were having this conversation, I think, the data around the state. So at what point, what cut point does a school start having fewer than two principals? And I think it's, I can't remember exactly, but I think it's at around 250. So above that, the schools in Vermont that have more, more than 250 kids, and I'll dig that out. I shared that with you last year, have two administrators. So you'd have to, your enrollment would have to decline a lot to get to the point where you would be average with the rest of the state. And not that that should be the metric. For me, the metric isn't how, what's everybody else doing. I just look at the work that they do, the complexity of the, the work, the expectations that we have in terms of instructional leadership. We want them working with teachers around data-driven instruction, around best practices in math. They, they support that. They attend those kinds of professional development sessions too. We want them to be those instructional leaders. I don't think you can expect that one person's going to do that.
And I remember you gave us a report in June. Do you recall, schools of our size, you've used two different wordings here, two principals versus two administrators? If there's separate structures that other schools are using where it's a principal on top of.
Right. Some of them are.
A vice or two vices or something like that.
Some of them are a principal and an assistant and others are co, co-principals.
Is, is there, do you have a view on which is more appropriate for our school?
Well, that's the piece that I want to think about more and I really do want to have meetings with the administrators. I want to have meetings with a group of teachers. I want to think more about that. What's that appropriate structure? What would that look like? I think that's what's up for discussion.
Any other input or questions for Elaine as she goes through this?
I just have an enrollment question. So last year we were at 429. What is our current number enrollment? Is it closer to 400 or?
It's 416, is that right?
408 is what I have. We're at 409 as of. 409.
What's the schedule here in terms of, for a good discussion of this?
Well, this obviously is a budget consideration, so I think I have meetings scheduled with the administration coming up and then maybe even in the next week.
Officer, what was the end of that?
I said I have meetings with the administration coming up. I think it's within the next week.
And you folks are on alternating your contracts, is that?
Yes.
All right, so we can anticipate we'll have a recommendation in advance of budgeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions, input? Thank you, Elaine. All right, six point five, capital projects. Unless that's Greg or Mark or the tag team.
Really not a lot to add from our conversation last month. We did, if you look at the sheet I distributed this evening, just revised the elevator number to be 150, 150,000. And that is plus or minus. Again, the architects are working on, on getting an even better number than that, but we do know that we will not have to replace the shaft. The asterisk is still there because it will require that we get a variance because of the codes that came out in 2014. Will not, when our, it'll require a variance for us to comply with the codes for 2014 because we won't be in perfect compliance. And we asked the architect if they were confident that that variance could be gotten and that wouldn't be an issue. And they, they made us feel that that wasn't going to be an issue. So that.
One second.
Sure.
What's the new code require?
That an elevator be able to hold a stretcher completely flat. So if you go into a new building these days, you can practically park, what was it, Lee's words, you can park a Prius in their elevator?
They're getting bigger and bigger.
They're huge. And we, because of the structure, Lee and the engineers have all said that we should not have a problem getting a variance.
Our EMT, they're really strong. I think that's getting better now. All right, so I guess, I guess we should move this as an action item for our next meeting. And hopefully we'll have some better, a better number for that and also some guidance from Bob about whether or not, I'll talk to Bob, about whether or not it makes any sense to use some of the fund balance to offset the bond or better to keep it in our budget.
Kristen, what are you going to make an action item on this, out of this?
Whether or not we want to ask the voters for approval.
Can I ask a clarifying question? This is the board's last regular meeting until February. So when you say action item, are you thinking budget or are you thinking?
You can do an action item during budget.
We just need to know that for.
I, I mean, because if we, if we are thinking that we might want to ask the voters for approval for this, it makes sense to ask for that at town meeting rather than some, is that the?
We just warn the meeting as a budget meeting with actions.
Okay.
So I'm sorry to be slow, but you're talking about an action item on a bond for all of these things?
No. Well, we could, i- if that's a will of the board, but I thought it was for just this top item, the urgent concerns, 259,000.
So 259,000.
Right. And it would be helpful too to know, to find out from Bob, like, an estimate of what that means for taxpayers? How much that is going to cost them?
It might be useful for that discussion to have a summary of our outstanding debt issues and, you know, maturity schedule, interest rates, that sort of thing.
I totally was going to think of that. All right, anything else? All right. Anything else that would be helpful from Bob? About debt issue? All right. And if anyone thinks instead we could get a bond for 2.1 million, let me know.
Are we talking about the seven-year capital plan items though?
Oh, yeah.
I think Greg has just added, so this is almost the exact same page you saw last time. He just kind of readjusted where the 1939 building stuff is, just kind of showing in there. But it's still an open.
So are you saying there's going to be a part two about some kind of project for the 39 building?
Right. As we discussed last meeting, looking at whether it makes sense just to, can we take that out of service?
Well, I understand-
Yes. So that-
There are options, but my point is, nobody's going to be happy and we're probably not going to be successful if we ask for $259,000 this spring or whatever and then come back a year later for whatever the cost of that would be. That's, that's an entire conversation that we have, should have ironed out beforehand. A piecemeal approach to this is going to be costly in a variety of ways.
Well, I thought what Mark said is that the architect was going to look, or maybe we'd be asking an architect to look at, how can we repurpose space in the building? You know, we have some fewer classrooms. We only have two fifth grades. We only have two sixth grades. What can we do with areas of the building to house the things that are in the 1939 building?
I understand that, but what I'm saying is-
Well, yeah, it's a group, it's a very good point. But it's not that, these projects that we've listed here, the roofs have to be done. They have to be done. And the 39 project is not going to be ready for this year. It's going to have to be something we're talking about next year or the year.
So I have to apologize to the board. Looking at a formatting error on this spreadsheet and I want to correct it now before we go on any further.
Oh, yes.
Excuse me. The $259,000 is the number without the elevator.
Yeah.
So it's $409,000.
We should have wanted to call that, too. I mean, 150, 120.
So my apologies for that. I'll make sure I correct that and get you the correct spreadsheet.
$59 seems really doable.
Yeah.
All right. So, and is it right that there, is it a decision packet that will be presented about doing a capital alignment towards?
To a contribution to the capital fund? Yes.
Thank you. Anything else on capital projects?
Yes, I guess I have a question about the $9,000 item and the $10,000 item. So is it, so right now are communication systems inadequate and the security cams are inadequate? Like, how is that?
We don't have, we don't have security cameras right now for the perimeter of the building. The only security camera we have right now is the main entry doorway, doorbell. So this has been discussed a few times over the last few years. I know Dave LeBlanc is a big proponent of adding cameras. This is a rough number, but it's basically involved in a system of posting cameras in strategic locations on the exterior of the building. So that if there were, if there was vandalism, you know, a closed circuit loop could be backed and reviewed and to try to, to have a record of who was on the premises. The other piece is that we're looking to, and this is really more on the regular, we're looking to include in the regular budget next year, is to enhance the doorbell camera system. Because right now that doorbell camera gives us very little bit of view and we're looking at enhancing that. But that's separate from this issue. This issue is security cameras around the perimeter of the building. Recently, something not unusual is for folks to get up on the roof of our building. And they have all sorts of creative ways to get up there, moving equipment outside to prop themselves up. And then once they're up there, they have access to the rocks, which are ballasts for the rubber membrane roof. And so you got rock throwing, you've got rock art on the art atrium windows. So beverage cans found up there. So I can, I can try to get a, if it's a will of the board, I can try to get a more precise number.
Yeah. And the school to bus communication system? Does that number seem high for, I'm not sure what you're going to-
Yeah. That's actually a number that's lower than we've gotten in the past. And that, basically our buses can communicate with each other sometimes. And we, for us to communicate with them, we have to call Betcha Transit and then Betcha Transit tries to radio them, can get them sometimes and sometimes not, depending where they are in their route. And bus drivers don't necessarily carry cell phones. They're not supposed to use cell phones. So we look at this as a safety concern. If something were to happen on the bus or bus were incapacitated, for them to be able to communicate with us, for us to be able to communicate with them. Basically, this, we'd be installing radios on the buses that we'd be purchasing and a repeater at the school. And there are other options here, too, in terms of sharing antenna space because the fire department is looking at also enhancing their communication system. And we're looking at the possibility of taking backing onto that.
Are there dead spots in Shaw?
Yes. You refer, for the radios, yes.
A lot of them?
I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't give you a kind of a number. I don't know what percentage our coverage is. We don't have that kind of study done. But anecdotally, depending on where they are in a valley or at the top of a hill and which side of Mount Philo or Route Seven they're on, you know, we don't know.
And on the subject of the security cameras, is that number generated based on information from people who have expertise on the subject? Or did Dave just go around and say, we ought to put one here and put one there?
That number is generated from Dave reaching out with a couple of vendors.
Any other questions?
Does Betcha Transit incur any of that cost? Or is this, we would own all the equipment?
It's our, it would be our equipment.
And other towns do the same thing in the district, like they have this enhanced?
Other towns, they're all on one transport, everyone else is part of a single transportation? And they have the radios that you're talking about on their buses?
I couldn't really speak to what other towns.
I don't know how they do it, but I do know that they can communicate back and forth, the buses, directly.
When I was at Essex, we had a radio that was able to communicate directly to the buses. But we didn't have the terrain issues and they had a better system than Betcha has.
All right. Seven point O, action matters. Seven point one, approve purchase services. Do I have a motion to approve purchase services? Do I have a second? Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Eight point O, consent agenda. Is there a need to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nine point O, director's comments.
Actually, I have a couple. This discussion about where to hire the special ed pairers seems to be related to whether or not there's any associated flexibility that would have a bearing on cost.
The answer to that is no, to both.
That's the first consideration. And then I think a second, but more distant consideration is how such a thing might hinge or be related to the hiring process in general. But if the answer on the flexibility and the cost implications is no, then I think you're safe in letting that be done at CSSU. Just my opinion. The other thing is, and I can't believe that I overlooked this when I was talking about the VSBA. Does everybody here know who Joe Blanchett is? Joe Blanchett used to be the lead negotiator for the teachers' union. He was the negotiator, the lead negotiator. When my first board settled its first contract, which in those days we did by the board, our board was in one room and the teachers' union was in another. And at that time, Joe, whom I was convinced drank blood, was in that room with the teachers' union. At the VSBA, they had an interview taped with Joe between himself and the woman who is the legal counsel for the VSBA. And Joe went into extensive detail about why, for lack of a better term, the board negotiating team always loses the negotiation. And the irony was that at that first negotiation, he was over there saying what he was saying to his group and I was over there saying the same thing to my group. And the point that he made was the reason why their group customarily prevails is because they realize that it is, in fact, a win-lose conversation. It's a question of the will to win and to be organized about it and conduct yourselves accordingly. It's interesting because that, that interview is not available for distribution. And I have my own suspicions about why Joe didn't want that to happen. But depending on who you talk to, Joe has either gone over to the dark side or come over to the good side. But there was a lot to be learned about it. And Joe lives in Charlotte. And I'm sure on an individual basis would be more than willing to talk to board members and make his feelings on the subject clear. But there was a lot to be learned from listening to the past lead negotiator who trained all of their negotiators and what he had to say about the process.
I would just add that the other point he made was that they take the long view. So they're, when they're negotiating, they're not just thinking about this negotiation cycle. They're thinking, where do we want to be in the third negotiation cycle? And now they're lining it up.
He's come to, he's come to budget meetings. I didn't know he was the chief negotiator.
It was very interesting.
It was, yeah.
Anything? Well, I just want to say kudos to Andy and Jenny. Friday was the first, hopefully, annual district jazz, middle school jazz festival at Browns River. And Andy was the director of the band and Jenny was there with a bunch of choral students. And what those kids did with one day's practice was really, really amazing. And our kids conducted themselves very, very well. So.
So once a year, I think this is in the spring, the jazz bands from each of the elementary schools in Chittenden South go to CBU and do a thing. I went last year and really it was extraordinary. And again, you would have been so proud if you'd been there. It was really good.
All right. Can I just confirm next meeting dates? Our budget forum and meeting, December 2nd, starting at 6 o'clock in the library at CCS. We have another budget meeting, December 16th, also at 6 o'clock. January 13th at 6 o'clock. And then we have our next regular board meeting is February 17th at 7 here. And for anyone interested, either as a rapper who just wants to go to the CSSU budget meetings, which are more important to the locals now since the special ed budget to budget is included, December 3rd at 5:30, December 17th at 5:30, January 7th at 5:30. And those will, those three meetings will all be at the CSSU office in Shelburne. And then the next regular CSSU meeting is also February 17th at 5. All right. Were adjourned?